We are going to conduct our open session for City Council. We're fortunate to have Rabbi David Lisbon of the Jewish Community Center here for the invocation. Then we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Nickel. Before we do that, Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Nickel.
Present.
Councilmember Purshtak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here. All right, thank you. So let's rise and we'll welcome Rabbi up to do the invocation. Thank you.
In Isaiah, it states, "He is the God, the one who fashioned the earth and its maker. He established it. He did not create it for emptiness. He fashioned it to be inhabited." A vital aspect of God's plan in creation, based on the verse in Isaiah, is for people to live and work together. For a civilized society that operates in harmony, where people join together to enact a legal system for the purpose of building an environment where people are free to grow, free to produce, free to pursue better lives for themselves and for others. We are soon celebrating the festival of Hanukkah, the festival of lights. Hanukkah is about the freedom to be true to what we believe without denying the freedom of those who believe otherwise. It's about lighting our candle while not being threatened by or threatening anyone else's candle. Hanukkah is about bringing light and awareness into our lives, a time to open one's eyes to see how every coincidence is the most awesome miracle. This is the purpose of government, to build a community where people can thrive as only human beings are capable, so that they are free to serve God to their best ability. Honorable Mayor, City Council members, it is easy to lose sight of this lofty goal when we are bogged down in deliberations in that which demands your attention. Therefore, we turn to God to bestow blessings on our city leaders, to provide them the wisdom, the balance, the rights of individuals, the community and businesses, to enact laws and institute policies that will bring God's blessing of peace, goodness, and blessing upon them and upon all the citizens of this great city. May it be favorable in God's eyes to bless our mayor and council members and all the citizens of El Segundo at all times and at every moment with this peace and blessing. May God bless the United States of America, the state of California, and the city of El Segundo. And let us all say, amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Rabbi for being here and thank you Councilman Nickel, much appreciated. And I was looking up the menorah lighting. What is the date of the menorah lighting? Twenty-second of December, right here at City Hall. Again, we're going to do it and it's going to be great. You'll be here?
Absolutely.
Awesome, look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, we have special presentations. First up, introduction of Area G Disaster Management Area Coordinator, Brandy Villanueva, and Chief Lee will be coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Member City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce our new Disaster Management Area Coordinator for Area G. She oversees emergency preparedness for the 14 cities in the South Bay. And I'm going to be leaning on her for choosing our next emergency management coordinator here in El Segundo. Director Brandy Villanueva.
Good evening, Council. My name is Brandy Villanueva. I am your new Disaster Management Area Coordinator, or DMAC. I am grateful to be able to serve not only El Segundo, but the other 13 South Bay cities in their preparedness, response, recovery efforts in disaster management. I've been in disaster management for over 18 years now. I've served locally in the city of Hermosa Beach for the past six years. So I'm really excited to be able to serve your constituents, your staff, as well as all of our partners and work together in preparedness. So thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Candy Cane Lane proclamation. And this will be Councilmember Giroux, soon to be Councilmember Baldino next year. New guy gets it. All right, whereas proclamation, city of El Segundo, California, whereas great and wonderful events are many times the inspiration of one person, like Ken Bailey, whose simple idea that a decorated tree be placed at the end of the cul-de-sac on the 1200 block of East Acacia Avenue in celebration of a neighborhood Christmas in 1949, is 73 years later, an annual holiday tradition worthy of national media coverage and known as Candy Cane Lane. And whereas Candy Cane Lane features Santa Claus arriving on top of a horn-blowing El Segundo fire engine to light the beautifully decorated homes on Candy Cane Lane. Unfortunately, this year, Santa will immediately be returning to the North Pole after he lights up the lane due to COVID-19 safety protocols. Is that still the case again this year? It really is? Wow. Whereas homes, yards, and trees are brightly decorated while property owners dress up their homes for all the oohs and ahs of the tradition of Candy Cane Lane, a few good merry men of Candy Cane Lane have given their merry ho-ho-hos year after year in the Santa suit donated by Chevron. A big thanks to spring cleaners for generally making sure Santa's suit is sparkling for the season, the El Segundo Police Department, the El Segundo Volunteer Program, and the El Segundo recreational department heads who make sure the crowds maneuver down the lane in a safe and orderly fashion. And whereas lest we forget, we herein list the names of the folks that are synonymous with Candy Cane Lane: Ayers, Klingemans, Stocks, Ezzet and Sala, McEwen, Lees, Moores, Turnbulls, McCullas, DeLamberty, Guidon, Laughlin and Barr, Mitchells, Gans, Hudspis, Hearts, Ducuckasses, Brunencants, Phillips, Stasser and Zetto, Rogers, Kells, Wong's, Slendering, Wisny Akowski, Amacost, and Hogs. Now, therefore, on the sixth day of December 2022, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the city of El Segundo, California proclaim the 1200 block of East Acacia Avenue as Candy Cane Lane from December 10th, 2022 at 7:00 PM through December 23rd, 2022, and invite the young and young at heart to experience the wonders of this El Segundo holiday tradition. Well done. There you go. That's a tongue twister for sure.
I just have to comment. So I actually was on Candy Cane Lane today at the very end, and the pavement is dug up with a backhoe digging up the sidewalk, and I was a little surprised. So I went and I talked to Marco, who said he wanted me to say hello. And he says, Carol, we are going to guarantee that this will be ready for Candy Cane Lane opening on Saturday. So thank you to the team and Marco. They're hard at work making sure that pavement's safe and for everybody to walk on on Saturday.
Thank you both. All right, next up, we have Councilmember Purshtak's going to read the proclamation related to the 58th Annual Holiday Parade. I don't see, is Jennifer Turnbull here? I saw her on the list. She couldn't make it. Okay, to accept the last one. So I know Marsha Hansen is here, the Executive Director, CEO of the Chamber. She'll be accepting the next one. Carol, if you could read that, the Annual Holiday Parade proclamation, please.
Yes. So our proclamation is for whereas the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce has given El Segundo the annual holiday parade for the past 58 years, a tradition which both celebrates El Segundo and calls forth the holiday season. And whereas the parade to be held Sunday, December 11th, 2022, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, with the theme of groovy holiday, will assemble on the corner of Imperial Avenue and Main and continue down Main Street, disbanding at El Segundo Boulevard. And whereas the parade will start with the grand marshal, which I don't think we have one this year. Okay, and with the traditional grand finale, the Chevron fire truck bringing Santa Claus through downtown El Segundo, and between the crowds will be traded to a few surprises. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council in the city of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 11th, 2022, as the 58th Annual El Segundo Holiday Parade and invite the community to all the traditional El Segundo holiday events and wish the Chamber of Commerce many more years of marching down Main Street and have a groovy Christmas, or groovy holiday. And to accept this is going to be the CEO, President of the El Segundo Chamber, Marsha Hansen.
Thank you all so much. Good evening, Mayor Boils, members of the City Council and city leadership. On behalf of the Chamber, we want to thank you for your support of the 58th Annual El Segundo Holiday Parade, a groovy holiday. It's going to be a lot of fun. We really enjoy putting this on with our partnership with the city. Your team is amazing here, as well as Chevron and the Edition Group and all of our sponsors. They really make this possible. This year, we have horses. We have dogs, two sets of dogs. We have kiddos. We have cool cars. We have guys in blue hair. I'm just saying. And we have more marching bands than we've ever had before. For the first time, we have the Cal State University Dominguez Hills Toro Pep Band and Drum Line. So, and plus more marching bands. I've never been in the parade before, so we're super excited about that. We know Santa is heading back north after Candy Cane Lane, but he's bringing the red eye back that night, the next morning, something like that. And he is going to be heading down Main Street on Sunday morning, afternoon, to see all the kiddos, both young and old kiddos. So we're going to invite the entire town out to show Santa what a great community we have. So the parade's on, rain or shine. So let's make sure it's shining. And we're looking forward to seeing you all there. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Hansen. Much appreciated. Oh yeah, do you want the proclamation?
Sure.
I think I'm just going bald. It's all going away. Here we go. One, two, and... Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, we're on to public communications. Now is the time and place for public communications. And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here would like to address the council?
No, public communications.
No, public communications. Okay. Give it 30 seconds or so and then we'll move on. Okay, that concludes public communications. City Manager, I know you wanted to talk about Hyperion.
Yes, as I usually do, mayor and councilor during this time of the agenda, I report on past, over the past couple of weeks, communications we've had and dealings with the Hyperion Treatment Plant. Regarding the wastewater facility itself, South Coast Air Quality Management District, the hearing board is going to meet on December 15th via video conferencing and by telephone, as they usually do, regarding the status of issued orders of abatement to Hyperion. This is where they typically go over any progress that's been made or lack thereof of the previous abatement orders. We've posted the link to the Zoom meeting on our city website for those that want to participate. Also, the central continuous fence line monitoring station for hydrogen sulfide, which H2S, was installed on December 3rd and will be operational by December 7th, tomorrow. It's an update on the monitoring station. And then also on December 1st, there was a polymer leak at Hyperion. We were notified immediately by their staff. I know our Public Works Director received a call regarding that right around noon on that day. The leak was immediately contained within the vicinity of that area where the leak occurred. AQMD was notified as a precautionary measure for possible odor release, and the polymer was cleaned immediately, happy to say on that. Regarding, as you know, I've also reported on the perimeter road construction that's been going on. That project now is approximately 68% completed. In particular, the sheet piles have been installed, close to 80% now. And we're anticipating that the full installation will be completed by the end of this month regarding the perimeter road. A third component of our dealings with Hyperion, our new communications manager has been attending what's called an Emergency Response Task Force. And they host, Hyperion did host the most recent meeting yesterday, and they confirmed really the emergency protocol now that will take place, where Hyperion's emergency coordinator will call our El Segundo Fire Department's 24/7 dispatch line to alert the city to any emergency that might occur at the plant at any time. So there'll be a 24/7 contact here at the city should a major emergency occur at the site. That is it for the updates this evening. Yes?
Last time you reported on working with Senator Ben Allen's office. Any updates, sir, please?
We are continuing communications with his staff on potential legislation. And a report or an announcement will be made very shortly.
And I am meeting with her, I actually have a telephone conversation, or yeah, telephone meeting tomorrow with the staff to go over the language for the proposed legislation.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Okay. I'm going to ask my colleagues, procedurally, after consent, are you all okay with moving the treasury or the investment portfolio report up? Okay, great. Well, let's do that. Item 12 will be moved up after we do consent. So, speaking of consent, are there any pulls off the consent agenda?
I hate to do it. I'm going to pull number six.
Number six. Okey-dokey. So is that it? Do we have a motion to approve four, five, seven, eight, and nine? So moved? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was 5-0. Okay, Councilmember Drew, item six.
Yeah, I got to pull up how it's worded here. So... Did I miss that? There it is. Okay, so this is the 2021 State Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Grant. So just looking through it, and I understand the way this works is basically there are things that we would be able to purchase and then get reimbursed for from this grant. Is that accurate so far?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I guess my only question is, it was a little bit vague as to what it can be used for. I'm just trying to understand, like, what are we accomplishing with that money?
Okay.
What we look to accomplish?
So I'll just go briefly. You see these every year. There's a three-year performance period. These Homeland Security Grants, which are UWASI or SHIP, or they're different grants, but through Homeland Security started after 9/11. And they give us each year about $19 million to split among the LA area fire departments. There has to be a nexus to terrorism. So most of the time, we've used it for urban search and rescue, for equipment or training. For this particular one, Randy Collins had asked for its emergency management software. That was the big dollar amount. And then the rest of it is use our equipment and training, and we have to follow the national priorities for what we ask for. And so that's why you keep seeing this. I'm hoping to maybe be done with these in like 2026. Those are my goals for the future, so you know, but because it is a lot of administrative work that goes to upkeep these, I'm learning now with all the audits and that, you know, that sometimes it can be more, more, you know, than it's worth, but...
Gotcha. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Yep.
And if anybody has any question, and if not, I will...
I just have one question. You know, so recently in New York, there was an issue with the substations being attacked, right, and then creating that outage. You know, is that something that we could be putting, you know, looking to make sure we have our substations protected? Or like, is that, I just want to make sure that... I just, I guess I don't know enough to ask that. I'm just asking that question.
Yeah, I don't know exactly. You know, some money goes to the police and some goes to emergency management. I'm dealing with just like the fire national priorities and the, you know, so I'd be happy to look into that.
I just want to make sure. I mean, that obviously happened in New York. And you know, there's always copycats out there. And I just want to make sure we've done due diligence to make sure that, you know, one of the things we talk about, we're the most important five square miles in all of LA. And we want to make sure that our businesses aren't interrupted because of something similar happening.
Yeah, we'll look into that for you and get back to you.
That's a great point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Drew, would you like to move approval of items?
Yes, motion approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0. Okay, we're going to move up item 12. So this is the, under the City Treasurer Report, Investment Portfolio Report for September 2022, and we see our elected City Treasurer, Matt Robinson, coming up. Welcome.
There we go. Is that better? Okay. There we go. All right, thank you. Okay, so it was a pretty busy quarter for us, not necessarily in terms of volume of purchases and activity, but in sheer value of purchases. We made some pretty big investments in the third quarter. And so that will kind of be the theme of what we're going to go through. So here is a portfolio summary. You've seen this before. The big changes are, we moved a lot of money out of the far-left column, which is camp, into the far-right column, which is US Treasuries. And that was part of a program to essentially kind of do some portfolio immunization to the POBs that we have coming up in every June of the year. So we typically have a $10 million outflow, and the whole idea was, let's get some really safe bullet treasuries on our books so that, that mature in June, so that, you know, as soon as we have those payments come due, the $10 million matures. There's no ambiguity as to when and how it comes. It's going to come, and we'll be able to throw that right into that payment. And so that was kind of one reason for doing that. And the other one was kind of as part of a general kind of portfolio orientation policy that we've been developing, which is to try and essentially build a portfolio that looks like the cap-weighted market. So, and we've modeled this after other kind of diversified bond portfolios, which are largely treasuries, second being corporate bonds, and then CDs and munis and agencies going down after that. So spent a long time on this first slide, but that's kind of, I think, generally going to carry through as to what you see. So again, the majority of our assets are in US Treasuries. We bought, well, I'll get into what we bought a little bit later, but this is kind of a similar way of looking at what we've already seen. Big changes, obviously, we've been moving out of LA into camp, which the current yield on camp is actually over 4% now, which is, which has been a long time since we've had yields of 4% or more, which is nice to see. This is, if you look at it by year, and so, you know, previously, we had just about nothing out in the 2026 and 2027, but those treasury purchases have now kind of brought some of our maturities into that range. And so we're really trying to diversify from a time or maturity basis, and you can see that starting to happen. This is a new slide that I put in that shows something else that I'm trying to get us to do is to diversify not only by year, but diversify by credit type or bond type. So, you know, theoretically, we'd want, you know, roughly 50% of our yearly maturities to be in treasuries, and then, you know, close to 30% being in corporates and so on. So not only do we have the target asset allocation across years, we have it within year as well. And that's something that, you know, is being built out. You don't really see it necessarily now, but that's something that's going to be happening. And we're going to be doing a lot of purchasing between now and the end of the year. This is by maturity date. So to the far right, you kind of, you know, ideally, we're going to have those be all pretty flat. And, you know, you can see that most of our assets are, have now actually moved into the reserve portfolio, and our liquidity portfolio just basically consists of cash and camp. This is our portfolio by actual asset, and, you know, this is something I think that we could probably pick up and go through later. You can look at what we own, but I don't think it's particularly interesting. The transactions, so these are the transactions we did in the third quarter. You see at the bottom four rows are those four treasury purchases. So those are the big ones. $10 million, or actually, five treasury purchases, sorry. 10 million dollars, or actually, five treasury purchases, sorry. $10 million maturing in 2023, 2024, 2025, 26, 27, all in June at the end of the month. We had a few agency purchases as well earlier, but they were much smaller in magnitude. So here's the interest that we're receiving. This is going up and will continue to go up with rates going up. We had a few things mature in Q3 as well. And you can see the big $46 million worth of purchases in Q3. Compliance, so this was as of the end of September. The max weights have actually changed. As of the last time I was in front of you guys and we did, we updated the investment policy. So some of these things have changed. Medium-term notes, we can do 30% now. Camp, we can do 100% now if we want to with certain stipulations. A number of these things have kind of been revised upwards, but we're not really testing the bounds in any of those. And we don't really intend to either. All the medium-term notes need to be invest, or actually triple, or sorry, single A or better. And you can see some of those are triple B, which is still investment grade, but those have obviously fallen since we purchased them. There's no real, you know, alarm from my point of view because, you know, again, everything's still triple B plus or better. And that's investment grade. And that's considered to be some of the safest corporate ratings that you can buy. So LEAF, this is a little bit less important because we've only got about a million and a half in LEAF now. But you can see kind of where that's been over the past. And rates are starting to go up. But LEAF is very slow to catch up. And that's partially because the mature, the average maturity is much longer. So they still have a lot of the very low-yielding bonds on their books from, you know, a couple of years ago. So we largely moved out of that into camp, which is much more, much higher yielding. So just in terms of city cash flows and just kind of what we look at and what we're trying to kind of compensate for, you know, you can see the big July dip where our credits are much less than our debits. So that's really what, that's really what we're trying to handle, you know. Most of our, most months, we do, we do run a surplus. So, you know, we're just kind of trying to make sure that we have cash on hand for July, or sorry, end of June. You can see, as I mentioned earlier, the cash flows are actually pretty predictable. So over the last three years, you can see everything goes pretty smooth with the exception of we've had, you know, once the POBs were issued, obviously, some of those things have shifted around between June and July. And then we had the year, last year, where we actually didn't pay them because we were in the process of issuing them. Drawdowns, this is another thing to look at and just be concerned with, just to make sure that, you know, over a 12-month basis, really, how much cash do we need to have on hand? That doesn't get any lower than about $5 million over the last almost 10 years now. So, you know, generally, you know, over a 12-month period, we're doing pretty well. Now, the economic environment, which we could probably talk a lot about, but, you know, you can see the green line, which is September, which is quarter end. The short-term yields have raised substantially. Yield curve is flattening. It's actually inverted right now. But it is certainly a lot better and a long ways away from what we saw in September 2021, where you had to tie money in for five years to get 80 basis points. So another interesting thing, you look at this and you realize that that short-term rates, which would be even five years or less, are higher than they've been in the last 10 years, even before the, I mean, even before COVID and, you know, the recession there. And so it's kind of interesting to see that. And, you know, again, it kind of speaks to, you know, you know, it was really, I think, important that we kind of stayed out of the market here where rates were going nowhere. And this is where we've been doing a lot of our investing. So, you know, that's obviously good for the city's portfolio. So here is what we talked about, which is what a lot of people seem to think is a recession indicator, or it is in general, a good, it has a good hit rate in terms of predicting recessions. Now, this is actually, if you look at it currently, it's actually way down here. It's about as bad as it was back in the early 80s in terms of the inversion of the yield curve. And so, you know, that seems like a lot of economists are agreeing that at some point next year, we're gonna be officially in recession. And there's been some jokes about the, you know, since all of the economists are finally agreeing on us being in a recession, maybe we actually won't be in a recession. So we'll see. But it certainly looks like that's gonna happen at some point next year. Unemployment continues to go down, which is another reason why, or one of the reasons why, you know, I think despite the fact that we had two consecutive quarters of GDP contraction, which is what is commonly thought to be an actual recession, that the NBER, I think it is, that they're the ones who determine whether we're in a recession or not, have decide, have not said that we're in a recession. And I think that there's a number of other indicators that I look at that are saying that, you know, we're not necessarily currently in one. And of course, we don't even know that we're in one until often much after a recession. This is what the market believes of the five-year forward inflation to be. So, you know, the market still seems to think that we're gonna get a handle on this. And this prediction is continuing to go down. We had a good number come out in November that, you know, is showing some progress there. And, you know, it seems like consensus is that short-term rates are gonna get up to 5%. We're gonna, we're gonna raise them here in a week. We're gonna buy another 50 basis points. And then I think another, you know, I think I'll put us for another, like, maybe 1% after that until they think that rates are gonna peak. And then they're gonna start going back down, which is why we have an inverted yield curve, is when future rates are expected to go down, short-term rates are high. And that is all I have. I thought I had, I had some, maybe some more to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any questions for the city treasurer? Great job, as always. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Have a good holiday.
You too.
All right, so we are back to the staff presentations, item 10, Adoption of the Citywide Salary Schedule with revisions through December 6, 2022. And Mr. George will present on this.
Yes, I will actually have our Human Resources Director Rebecca do the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight is a housekeeping item that confirms the city's compliance with CalPERS regulations for a citywide salary schedule and adjust salaries for the part-time positions that are going to be affected by the upcoming minimum wage. Minimum wage is increasing from $15 to $15.50 effective January 1, 2023. The other item included with this resolution and staff report is we made a change to the Communications and Legislative Affairs Manager title. And we need to adopt a resolution with just the brand-new title, which is Communications Manager. So there's two resolutions for you here for your consideration. But this is just a housekeeping item to be in compliance with CalPERS and with the state law for minimum wage.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. Any questions from the council before we have the city attorney read the resolution? Okay, Mr. Hensley, please do so.
Yes, Mayor, Council. The first resolution is a resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, adopting a citywide salary schedule effective October 4, 2011, with revisions through December 6, 2022, is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval?
Nichols, so moved.
Correct me if I'm second?
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, Mr. Hensley, the second one, please.
Yes, the resolution establishing basic salary ranges for various job classifications is ready for adoption.
Someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. Right next up, we have item 11, Fiscal Year 2022, 2023, First Quarter Financial Review. Mr. George.
Yes, our Finance Director, Joel Elio, will present this item along with, I think, a couple of members of his staff.
All right, good evening, Mayor Boyle, City Council members. So I am gonna have our Finance Manager, Vicky Chow, and our Management Analyst, Liz Leidig. They'll be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council members. So staff have reviewed all revenue and expenditures for the first quarter of fiscal year 22, 23, with focus on the general fund to determine if all sources and uses are on target with the originally adopted budget. As we review the first quarter results, the city continues to experience a recovery of general fund revenues from the lows during the pandemic and the return to pre-pandemic revenues. So first, I need to mention that the package, I mean, the, this table, you know, package has some typo. We have a change on the slide, but your package is still showing like the typo for the last column, the fourth line, property tax, and also the third line, TOT. So the TOT should be 1 million. So probably you will see this typo in your package.
So what's up on the screen is the updated version?
Yeah, we have updated that. But your package is still showing the reversed lines between line three and line four for the last column. So for sales and use tax, first quarter revenue is 1.2 million, which is 9% of annual budget. It appears to be trending with the adopted budget, slightly higher than prior year. Business license tax, BLT is assessed each December and collected by the city from December 31st to January 30th, from December 1st to January 31st each year. The BLT will be reviewed during the third quarter financial review, which will include revenue from the month of January. TOT, 1.3 million, 12% of annual budget. The, this revenue source is driven by two factors, hotel occupancy rates and the room rates. Hotel occupancy rates continue to rise post-pandemic. The first fiscal year quarter rates trending an average of 8.5% higher than rates at the same time last year. The average daily rate in first quarter, 10%, 10.6% higher than prior year, but still lower than pre-pandemic rates. Property tax, the city received property tax payment in December, January, April, and May each year. So staff will continue to monitor the progress of property tax payments when the actual payments are received by the city. Sharon Tax Resolution Agreement, city receive annual payment from Sharon by March 31st. UUT, the city has received 1.5 million, which is 20% of the total budget at UUT during the first quarter of fiscal year 22, 23. This revenue is tracking in line with the budget at this time. Charge for services, 1.3 million, 28% of annual budget, which is 3% higher than prior year. At this time, charges for service is projected to be in line with budget. So yeah, total fiscal year 22, 23 budget is 81.8 million, which is 1.6 million, which is 1.6 million higher than the same time last year.
Yeah, there's a couple of things I wanna point out here, is one, our TOT is trending higher than what we're expecting. So we have 11 million, 40,000 budgeted. We're probably gonna hit about 12 and a half million this year. So that's a good thing with if the trend continues. Another line item to point out is our UUT. Well, it's in line with what we're expecting. It does seem like our gas UUT is a little bit higher than what we have budgeted. So we might see a little uptick there above what we anticipated. And then, as Vicky mentioned, you know, we're 1.6 million higher than the same time last year. So last year, first quarter saw 7.5 million. This year, 9.2 million. So it's, it's a good sign that, you know, we continue to recover.
And Joe, this is, these are great, a great information, great slides. But when we do present it next time, can we add a column that actually shows that trend? So we could see that 1.6 million dollars?
Like, you mean the overall?
What, cause so like you're saying, like, obviously, the, the, the TOT, you're saying it's right now, it's trending above a million dollars over projection.
Yeah, based on the room rates and the.
But if we could capture that, so we can gauge where we're trending above, you know, financially, you know, on a snapshot, we can look at it quickly and say, okay, here's where we're trending up, trending down. So that way, we know where the target needs to be focused on, or what we should be focusing on.
Noted.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I didn't quite follow the UUT. So it looks like it's up 40 to 50% over the same period prior year, roughly. What, what was that driven by? You said it was in line with budget expectations, but.
Well, our budget is also higher than what we had in the prior year. So the gas UUT, Vicky, is it the cogent that's coming in a little bit higher?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's gas and cogent. I don't know if you have any other additional.
Gas, water, electric, cogent, telephone combined.
Yeah, and I think it's the gas and cogent that's trending a little bit higher than what we.
Is that from running the pipe power demand in August, when they were running the stacks?
It could be.
It's gotta be, because it can't be a function of rates, because rates wouldn't have gone up that way. They're, they're regulated. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had on that, yeah.
We did put this on there, and this is kind of pictorial of what Vicky said. So some of the trends and some of the revenue items, for instance, if we look at the bottom there, business license tax, you know, says collected December through January, property tax, collected December, January, April, May. That way, the public knows. I'm sorry?
We don't have that slide yet.
Oh, that's not in your packet?
It's not.
So yes, this, this is in there, and we'll make sure that council does get the updated slide. Yep. And so this is, you know, that way, the public, when they see, well, there's, you know, no property tax received yet, or no business license tax received yet. This slide helps, I think, educate the public on why that is. Okay, do you have anything to add to the revenues?
That's all I have. Do you have any questions? Revenues?
So the only thing is, we have to, when, you know, the business license just passed. So one of the things that we need to do as a city is discuss about the rollout. Cause I know it's established that it would start in 2024, right? But we, we as a city can make some amendments to the actual rollout of some portions of that. So I think that is, we need to set a time or an agenda item to actually have that conversation.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So the city manager and I are meeting tomorrow to actually discuss how to roll that out.
And then if, if we did roll it out, just so to educate the constituents, if we did roll it out as-is in 2024, how much income, anticipated income, if everything was status quo, would it generate?
Approximately $3 million.
So we're, so we're hoping, I mean, so it will really help us work on, improve our parks and wrecks and other capital improvement projects.
Absolutely.
So this slide shows the expenditure. Total fiscal year 22, 23, adopted budget shows 86 million for the first quarter. Expenditure reflects 60, I mean, 16 million, which is 19% of the annual budget. Most of the city departments and operations are trending below or near the adopted budget. PD, 5.4 million, 26% of annual budget. So trending slightly above adopter department budget, mainly due to high, higher admin. budget, mainly due to higher admin expenditures as well as overtime. You can compare to last year, there were five frozen positions in fiscal year 22, all of them were filled in fiscal year 23.
I would just have a question on the community services. Why is that 1 million dollars, 1 million two?
Communities services?
Yeah, I don't think we had the staff during COVID, but it's still, you know, it's right on trend for the quarter.
Annual budget for one quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah, for last year, so there was many frozen positions that were purposely identified in the budget for 2122. This year, we didn't have specific frozen positions, only a 5% vacancy rate. So most of the departments, thanks to, you know, the great work effort of HR, have been able to fill many of those vacant positions this year.
Just got one thing. Sorry. On the police piece, but is Chief Ramunas around, or?
Yes.
And just had a question, and I understand that we're, obviously, it's only first part. Hey, chief. We're only first part through the, first part of the year, but you did mention that it's trending above budget. And the reason why I call this out is because we have to be equal opportunity on this. We've called out fire on this thing, on something similar before, so I want to be equitable on it. So I know we allocated another million plus for your budget this year, based on what you requested. So I'm just trying to identify where, why we think it's, why is it going? We're looking at we're going to be over budget, even with the extra allocation we gave. So is that due to factors that were not foreseen, or what's your?
Well, it could be a combination of things. One is, like Director Lilio said, we did get all of our positions back last year, so we did reach the number of 61 out of 62 authorized. So we're hoping to get to 62, but even getting to 61 was pretty good for us. And so also, the overtime is going up a little bit this year so far, only because many of the people that we've hired are in the academy or on training, and so we need to fill some of those vacant positions that we have with overtime.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm continuing on transfer out, represents transfer out to CIP Fund and POB payments. POB payments, they are in December and January, I mean, December and June. The second quarter fiscal year 2223 will show more expenditure activities in this source. Fire, 3.4 million, represent 25%, trending with the adopted department budget. Community service, 2.2 million, 25% trending with the adopted department budget, because most programs and facilities have been fully reopened post-pandemic. Public Works, 1.4 million, 20%. Salary benefit and overtime are trending below budget due to position vacancies. So you can see a few department trending below budget due to either position vacancies in some division, or little activities and building for services.
I have a question. So, and it goes back really to PD about the overtime. You know, as we have these bigger events, like we just had the tree lighting event, which was bigger than has been historically, we had the Art Walk, and then we have Candy Cane Lane, which now that it's post-COVID, and it was massive last year, we anticipate it's going to be massive again this year. You know, it's going to take time from the PD to offer services for those expanded crowds. Are we looking at taking some of the money from the Arts and Culture Fund to offset some, like to, because when we're looking at the, we're looking at creating these events, a component of that cost is the services. So how do we ensure that we're, you know, not tapping into the PD's general budget as we expand these events, and that we cover the costs with the Arts and Culture Fund? And that's just a thought question, and I just wanted to put it out there.
I will have to work with staff on that. It's a great question. I know that for some of the events, there is an allocation that does come from the Arts and Culture Budget. Specifically which ones, I will put together and let you know, particularly the ones that you just mentioned. I know that there is a portion of those budgets that does come from arts and cultural, but I'm not sure exactly the amount, but I'll be sure to get that to you.
Because I'm sure, I mean, Chief Ramunas, I'm sure you're anticipating this Candy Cane Lane to be, you know, we're going to have to offer services. Last year was quite large, and I'm sure this year it will be bigger. So it's going to take time, you know, obviously, your resources are going to be stretched, and I just want to make sure that we are not, that we are providing the right services and not worried, you know, we're worried obviously about the budget, but we need to ensure that we're protecting the residents and making sure that the residents are feeling safe and secure.
Yeah, no, I agree. There are a lot of events that are taking a lot more resources from the PD, whereas before, we might be able to staff it with maybe a couple officers now because of what's going on in the country and some of the disasters that are going on. We do make sure that we have enough officers to ensure the safety of all the people that attend these events. One thing that we have been doing is, so we have been hiring private security through different departments in the city to cover some of these events also that do help staff them.
Now I'm turning to Liz Lydic, Management Analyst, to continue on the other funds.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Our two enterprise funds are water utility and wastewater. In the first quarter fiscal year 2022-2023, water utility revenues are trending slightly lower than the adopted budget, and water expenses in the first quarter reflect only two months of bills from West Basin Water District for the purchase of water. Wastewater Fund revenues are trending slightly lower than the adopted revenues, and the expenses are trending below budget. Both water funds are trending slightly under budget additionally because of low CIP project-related expenses to date. Internal Service Funds include general liability and workers' compensation insurance. General Liability Fund revenues are transferred in from operating departments and programs throughout the city. The city receives revenue from the recovery of claims paid. The revenues are expected to trend with the approved revenue budget, in large part due to the addition of a dedicated risk manager on staff. Workers' Compensation Fund revenues and expenses are trending with the adopted budget. In the first quarter 2022-2023, both internal service funds are primarily comprised of the annual, excuse me, expenses are primarily comprised of the annual insurance premiums paid, as well as claims paid. And annual premiums for both funds are paid each July, and claims are paid as they occur. The Debt Service Fund records the city's lease payments for the Douglas Street Gap Closure Capital Improvement Project. The city makes semi-annual lease payments over a 30-year period, which began in February 2006. Interest-only payments on the lease obligation are due February 1st, and on August 1st, principal and interest payments were due. You see those reflected in the expenses here. For the Senior Housing Fund, Park Vista is overseen by the Senior Citizen Housing Corporation Board and managed by a third-party property management firm, the Cadman Group, and expenses incurred in this fund year-to-date are related primarily to administrative activities. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Joe for the conclusion.
Okay, so, you know, the first quarter review, we don't have a lot of revenue data, but so far, we are trending with our budget and with TOT and maybe UUT trending a little bit higher, so that's good news. We will be watching, you know, the revenues very closely. I watch, you know, news reports all the time, read Wall Street Journal, watching how the private sector is doing if, as Treasurer Robinson said, that, you know, that inverted line is indication that there could be a coming recession. The private sector will always have signs first, and you'll see those indicating signs happening within the private sector. Government typically lags behind, but, you know, if we're watching the economy very closely, we'll see those signs and be able to be prepared for it. So the proposed, the next steps, we will have our mid-year review in February, so either the first or second meeting in February. And then preparation of 2324 budget, strategic planning study session sometime in February, budget study session in March, and these are all, you know, projections, and I'll work with the City Manager to get a date down for sure. Possible second budget study session in April, formal five-year capital improvement plan in April, master fee study, and hitting all those fees with CPI, and making adjustments that are necessary. That's brought to council in April. And then a public hearing for the adoption of the budget in June. So that concludes the first quarter financial presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe and team. Appreciate it. All right. I believe that concludes our regular business. It does, yes, thank you. I believe the City Clerk has an announcement.
I do. So the Clerk's Office received the final count for the election from the county last night, so we would like to congratulate Mr. Pimentel on being re-elected, and Mr. Ryan Baldino, our new elected council member. We will have the swearing-in ceremony next week, Tuesday, December 13th. Here at Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. That is all.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're on to council comments. Councilmember Drew.
Yeah, just real quick, I think the final count, I didn't see it, I believe there was over 7,600 and change votes from the City of El Segundo out of about 11,700 registered voters. That is an incredible number, and I really appreciate everybody stepping up and taking on that responsibility. I don't believe a lot of cities have that kind of ratio, so it's great to see an involved community. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank all the city staff that worked together to put on the Festival of Holidays over the weekend, although I was unable to attend. I heard great things about it all day long. Just activating Main Street was fantastic, and I know it's not a simple task, and I know it involves multiple overlapping departments and lots of teamwork, and so, you know, all the staff that does that often gets overlooked and not thanked. And so I just want to make sure to thank all of you for that. Be safe on Candy Cane Lane this weekend, all right? Santa's coming Saturday night? Yeah? Saturday night? And the parade, rain or shine, on Sunday? Good times. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure we'll hear more from you next week in your final council meeting. Final, final for now. Councilmember Purstak.
Yes, I just wanted to know, I would like to put out there that we, I'd like to form a subcommittee for the, some members of the council to work with some members of the community, to work with the parks and wrecks, as well as the public works, on determining the scope for the, to look for a project manager for those three initiatives, the plunge, irrigation, the teen center, and the skate park, and then look at, develop that scope, as well as develop a, you know, RFQ to go, look to find somebody to manage that project. So I think a subcommittee would be in order to do that, and maybe reach out to some community members, as well as looking some of the people from our Parks and Wrecks Commission. I don't know if we have to take a vote on that, or can we do that now, or if we could bring it to the next agenda. I just want to make sure that that's on the next agenda, so that we can move that forward. I'm very determined to get the plunge opened before, in two years, so every meeting, I'm going to be bringing it up, because it is going to be very near and dear to my heart. And then I also want to ask if we should be forming a subcommittee to talk about the Parks and Wrecks, the Arts and Culture 1% Fund. You know, I know that the Arts and Culture Group come to us and present, you know, some, how they want to spend that money, but I really want to make sure that we are putting money aside for long-term hard art costs, including the plunge and anything that we want to do at the parks, like hard art, like some, not soft costs like the events, but hard costs. And I want to make sure that we sit with the Finance Director to find out, and also the Development Director, to find out what anticipated projects are coming up, so that we can project how much money is going to be going in that fund in the next couple of years, so that we can then put aside some money for, so that when we do do the plunge, that that money is already set aside and earmarked. I'm just worried that we tend to, you know, oh, there's money in the bank, let's spend it, and I just want to make sure that we have some long-range planning when it comes to those funds.
Sure.
So I'm not sure if we can do that as well at the next agenda, but I just would, I'd like those two short-term committees to be set up. And I just wish, I hope everybody has a great holiday, on the holiday parade. It's fun to watch and enjoy Candy Cane Lane. And, oh, that's the last thing, I know we didn't talk about it, but historically, we talked about it. Are we doing an extra trash, or have we talked to Edco to provide trash, butt trash receptacles? Okay, I just want to, because I know historically, we've done that, I just want to make sure we don't forget to do that. And congratulations to your team and Marco for getting that sidewalk fixed before the event takes place.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pritzker. Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to commend staff. Great, great events so far. I know there's more to come. It's going to be a great weekend, really looking forward to the parade and to the Candy Cane Lane. City Attorney.
Nothing to say, Mayor. Thank you.
City Manager. I also don't have anything, Mayor. We are adjourned. Thank you.